I'd like to declare our council meeting for October 1st, called to order. I am acting as mayor this evening, I'm deputy mayor and our mayor is ill unfortunately. So, I would like to have an adoption of the agenda for the October 1st, 2019 regular meeting of council to be adopted as presented. Alright, Councilor Scharnard? All in favor? Alright, I'd like another motion to adopt the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 regular meeting of council to be adopted as presented.
Make a call.
Alright, Councilor Byer? Are there any errors or omission?
No, but from the first one, yeah.
She didn't change the agenda. Oh, I did forget that on the agenda, sorry. That adoption of the agenda should have been, I'm sorry, we'll go back to that. The adoption of the agenda for the October 1st, 2019 regular meeting of council to be adopted with the deletion of the closed session, item M1, council communication. Sorry, we'll go back. Could have someone make that motion, thank you Councilor Scharnard. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, sorry, I missed that. Alright, the minutes then, Councilor Byer? Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as you read them?
No.
All in favor? Right, carried. Alright, public hearing now, we'll go to public hearing for bylaw two, two, three, three. Just a second here. Did you want to speak to this at CAO or we'll just declare it open?
We don't have to vote on anything first? No, okay. This was a bylaw that was brought to council a few weeks ago, we set a public hearing for today. We hadn't heard anything at this point from the public at all regarding this bylaw, no feedback at all.
Okay, I'll declare the hearing open then and we'll wait a few minutes and if we have someone from the public coming forward. It's quite a, I don't think there'll be much confusion about this, so I will declare the public hearing closed. Alright, we have a delegation now, our MLA, if he would like to present your inaugural address to our council, we'd like to invite you to come to the chair at the table.
I thought I was psychic up at the chair.
Sorry Martin, you just got in the room, but thank you if you'd like to give us a little talk.
Right here?
Yes, that would be just great, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me this evening, I appreciate the opportunity. I've seen a few of you guys somewhere before. So, it's been a very fast-paced few months, obviously since April 16th. We put forth a pretty aggressive agenda in the assembly and I'm not sure if everyone's noticed yet, but we have a premier that works. He goes around, he boasts of our province and our resources and our people, everywhere he goes. And he has taken on a monumental task of trying to attract investment back to our province. And in seeing, and myself seeing our premier working as hard as he does, I can only dream of keeping up. But, I too believe that all of us representatives, 87 in total, have a monumental task of ensuring that our province is better tomorrow than it is today. So, the last number of months, I have taken on myself to get through every community in the constituency to not only introduce myself, but to hear concerns. There seem to be a few different concerns in some communities, but by and large, we all seem to be on the same page. Some of the concerns that I've heard have been around housing and having affordable housing to attract young people to live in our communities and work in our communities. Seniors comes up on a regular basis. I have a great task with West Yellowhead. A lot of communities have reliance, some more than others, with our forestry sector and they have some very, very big concerns across the constituency with the mountain pine beetle and right now with the section 11 draft for caribou. Basically, our province coming up with our own version of range planning to protect caribou which are seen as a species at risk. So, those things will impact both energy and forestry. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of big concerns. So, beyond going around and introducing myself and having those discussions and then forwarding those concerns and getting answers in these early days, I've, well, I moved an office next door. The, that was something right out of the gate that I took on myself, that I wanted to follow up my campaigning. I think that I made it very clear in my campaign that I was not a White Court guy, I was a West Yellowhead guy. I've made it clear since that I'm not a UCP MLA, I'm a West Yellowhead MLA. So, one of the things that I took on obviously was to move my office to a central location to the constituency. Feedback on that has been, number one, surprise.
Yes.
People thought that this West Yellowhead MLA was going to plant himself in White Court, which obviously I haven't done. But, there's been a lot of gratitude, even from Grand Cash and Jasper. They know they can access the office should they need on their way to Edmonton on Highway 16. So, I think that was, well, I know that that was the right thing to do, I'm glad that other people see it that way as well. And that being said, an office is an office and I've tried to make it very clear to people that I will go meet them. If, if you know, they're going to come into my office anyway, that's great, but more often than not, my meetings happen in other communities, in people's houses, when possible. I believe a lot, a lot of this job entails me to build relationships with people and move forward in that capacity. We had Minister Glubish, Minister of Service Alberta, stop through Edson on his tour. Very, very pleased to host him. Very recently, we had Minister Schweitzer, he was traveling back from Grand Prairie to Calgary and he made a stop on his rural crime tour in White Court and thanks to the council who were able to attend that. I have been discussing with his office since his tour is being extended and I'm trying to get him to come to Edson. So, I'll keep council informed as to hopefully some success in that conversation. Most recently, I attended a little bit, I spent a little bit of time at AFPA, so Alberta Forest Products Association, their annual meeting in Jasper. And then I followed that up with a little bit of time at AUMA where I saw some of the council there. And actually, one of the highlights of my short time so far, I attended my first round dance actually with the Assinibochee-Winawak Nation in Grand Cash. Absolutely phenomenal, so just my little pitch, if, if others are like myself and had never done that, I would encourage everyone to take the opportunity should it arise. And, and on that note, the Assinibochee-Winawak Nation are just fantastic, fantastic people. Truly, an honor to be with them at any time, but for an occasion like that, in a special honor. So, that's basically my report. I guess just quickly touch on, everyone at AUMA heard the premier's address, just to follow that up, I don't have any answers tonight on where budget is going to fall. I do hope that, I hope that everyone is actually participating in the budget online. I can't remember the actual website address, but for input on the budget, there is an opportunity online. And I look forward to having more discussions along that line when we have more answers.
Well, thanks, we'll give people a chance for questions, but when you talked about your premier being busy, I think our West Yellowhead MLA is busy as well, so thank you for that. Go ahead, Councilor Scharnard.
Yeah, actually, thank you for coming here. When we really like to talk to you is after the budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we've had some meetings, like a lot of us individuals, like at AUMA, we all had a chance to meet a lot of the ministers and ones that were more important to us. So then we probably after the budget, we could touch base with you and see if we can set up meetings because all of them did give us answers. We'd like to answer you and I respect the fact, not till after the budget. I fully appreciate what we were hearing there is there will be cuts and they were expressing that the cuts will be spread out, you know, so it's the province, there's only one taxpayer, so after the budget, we would be very interested to see and I would agree with deputy mayor, I do see you out and about and good for you and I'm very pleased that you did put the office in Edson because I was one of the ones saying, hey, you're from White Court, you made me the promise, you said you don't like support me, I will be for West Yellowhead. So, thank you for doing that.
Okay, Councilor Bevan?
To the Chair, Mr. Martin, thank you for everything. Can you work closely with our chamber? I know they would like to work closely with you and trying to get some of our other MLAs out here and put something over at the museum or wherever they can do it and that. They do a wonderful job here, they've got to take 161 businesses now that belong to the chamber. And I know they get a lot of questions at times saying, are we getting anybody out here that would put on something for us and that? And I have suggested to them, you know, get ahold of your office here and I knew you were coming here tonight, so I said, you know what, I'll mention it to our MLA that's here and that and, you know, see if we can do that so we can keep in touch with them. They definitely be, they definitely want to work with you and for our region here for sure.
Absolutely. And, and something that I have encouraged, I know that I see a lot on my feet of our ministers being at different events across the province and I've encouraged councils and chambers to lend a voice to that and yes, share with my office, a minister that you feel you need to talk to, but reach out to them and then I can add a voice to that. And it goes a long way.
It does.
But yeah, I'll, I'll be continuing to talk to Kathy as well.
You bet, I agree, thank you.
Councilor Byer?
Through the chair. To Mr. Long, thanks for your presentation. As you know, we were able to speak a little bit at the AUMA conference in Edmonton and I wanted to know if there's any, like you have a different perspective, right? You get to see our whole region as a whole, whereas we are seeing our, you know, our town a little bit more focused. If you come across any opportunities for our region to collaborate that we maybe were missing out on or you haven't confirmed that we're, that we're doing something already regarding that, that you can approach us, you know, even if we don't want to maybe hear that information and, and give us that news, right? That way, if we're missing out on something or if, if there's an opportunity for us as well, we'd appreciate to, to hear that as well.
On that note, I did have the opportunity to join, I think it was the Business Support Network in Hinton a couple of weeks ago and they had a presenter, Doug Griffiths. Now, Doug encourages smaller communities in particular to find out where they're going for the future. A lot of our rural communities in Alberta have obviously been very reliant on resources over the years and it seems that there is a push that we can see in the not-too-distant future that resources might not be the primary focus. So, that, that was basically the context of his conversation and where is your community going to be if, for example, resources fall flat? And it was, I'm really glad I had the opportunity to attend and I know that it stirred up a lot of conversations there and I've had a few sentences follow-up, but that's something that I would really love to, to discuss at another time. What, because I don't know what the vision is for Edson council, but I would love to hear that and hear how I can be involved in that process.
Appreciate that, Councilor Swanson?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming. I have to agree with Councilor Scharnard, I'd love to hear your, I'd love to hear from you again once the budget is approved and we can, we can ask you some specific questions on the, on the new strategy from the new government. And I'd also reiterate that this, as you know, this is one of the only areas in the province that doesn't have a regional economic development, you know, group, so myself, among other councilors here, believe that there is a need for that and we, and we believe that we could work together as a region to develop economic opportunities and you would be a great asset to have on our side working towards that.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Curry?
Alright, you're the Chair. Also, thank you and I really do want to commend you on how much you have been out. I've been around a lot in, at different events and I'm happy to see your face there often, so that's really nice to see. I think I would just, it was brought up lots at AUMA and I know you've heard lots of conversation here, but just also ask for just advocating for what we can do for rural homelessness, knowing that we are in an acute state here in our community with 50 registered homelessness. And being at AUMA, it was quite shocking as we're talking to other rural communities that have none or have one. So, we are, we are definitely in an extreme state and we know that. And we're working really hard at a municipal level to try to figure out what we can do, but we really do need help from a provincial level of what we can do, what are next steps, how can we partner together? We're willing to do as much as we can, but we really do need some partnership and help with that. So, any way that you can suggest, encourage and advocate for us to do that would be much appreciated.
Absolutely. I did take part in a community meeting a few weeks ago here.
The community partnership?
Yeah, and just, the vision in that room was just spectacular. And I trust that there will be some very good ideas come out of that. I have been texting today with members in this community about potential locations and unfortunately, one of those potential ones, we just found out is not going to be. But nevertheless, it is very much on my, on my heart. Yeah, I think I've shared with a number of people sort of my background as far as a chairperson at a soup kitchen actually in White Court and that's something that I'll be a very loud advocate for each, in each community, I will come alongside the groups who are being the loudest voices for the people who don't have a voice themselves. So, thank you for your heart in that, I appreciate it.
Councilor Bevan?
To the Chair. I guess maybe the other meeting that we would probably like to attend is one of our synergy meetings.
Yeah.
Because around that table there, we have people from oil and gas, forestry, trappers association, the seniors, everybody like that, there's a wide group of people around there and they'd probably like to have you come there and give a presentation and they probably have a lot of questions for you and different things and that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, that would kind of hit a whole new group of people out there in this synergy meeting instead of, you know, just us or whatever and stuff like that or going to museum.
Yeah.
They seem to get a really good turnout here all the time and that and I think they really appreciate you stopping in there and talking to them and that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I've been a couple times, once before and once since the election, but I'll, I've never even thought about asking to present, so I'll, I'll reach out.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Scharnard?
I don't know if it would be fair of me to ask you, but what was the highlight of the forestry, because Edson is important to the forestry, the highlights of the forestry meeting you attended in Jasper?
My personal highlight was the minister was there basically, or I was there at the same time as the minister. And he actually invited me to attend a meeting with himself and the AFPA board, which I was more than happy to attend. In fact, there were a couple of occasions during that meeting where he allowed me to speak, knowing that I come from the forestry sector. But coming out of that meeting, I had the opportunity to engage with, with some of the board members. Our Ag and Forest Minister has a bit of a different approach. Some, some might say direct, some might say aggressive, but he wants our forestry sectors to succeed. And he is challenging senior bureaucrats and his senior bureaucrats will admit to that, that he is definitely giving them direction and they love it. So, the board themselves, the feedback I got is they, they see that forestry is going to benefit from his direction. So, it's kind of funny how a few short months have changed that perspective because in my first days, I had a lot of pushback from people saying, why are, why have they not separated agriculture and forestry? And yet now, the forestry sector is saying, wow, this is a great minister. And I trust that the same feedback is coming from Ag after his Bill 6 tour, so that, that was a highlight for me though, being able to sit in on that board and, uh, meeting and get the feedback. I also had the opportunity to do an opening welcome speech from West Yellowhead, or to West Yellowhead and had the opportunity to once again tell everyone in the room that I get to serve the most beautiful constituency in the province. And they were sitting there in the middle of Jasper and no one could argue, so. That's always a highlight for me as well, so.
When Solicitor General came, we had sort of a brief discussion about trying to have a regional treatment center for addictions, mental health and also help with housing. And he did suggest that I keep in touch with you about where we would get the social workers and mental health workers to work in this, so I know you don't know that yet, the budget isn't out, but please do try to keep in touch with us if you could, we'd really appreciate that. And thank you for touring today and finding out what isn't available. You know, we always have high hopes thinking things are available in town, but we'll have to find a spot too. So, thank you for that.
And, and actually on that note, I, the people who were able to attend that night, I kind of very quickly pointed out to the minister that he mentioned that there were funds going to rural Alberta.
Right.
And that was a focus, right?
He did. We like that word.
Made sure that I got that right and that everyone else heard that. And so, so no, I thought that was a very encouraging statement.
Yes, because we definitely have the same problems as the cities have, so we do need to attend to them. I believe you have a question?
Speaking of forestry and that, do you have any update in what the pine beetle over the winter months then coming forward here now? I think we've all kind of heard different scenarios, what's happened to that, but nothing has ever been put out there whether they decreased or whether they're, you know, multiplying now or whatever. Maybe you can't speak too because it's not okay?
I can speak to the feedback I've heard from industry, which is, number one, there has been a bit of kill with pine beetle. Obviously, most of us are aware that the cold snap that we had for three weeks was a little too late.
Super hoping.
That most of the beetle had burrowed in at that point, which is unfortunate. And so, there's not as much kill as some people would have expected. Yet, industry believes that this year and next are the years that we need to get ahead of it. And so, I'm, there, there seems to be a little bit of confliction right now with what I've heard from industry and sort of from government as far as where beetle is in certain areas, but that's something that I'm trying to weed through and get more information on. So, again, with forestry, so many, so many communities relying so heavily on forestry, it's a conversation that I'm having on a daily basis right now and, like in Edmonton, to try to make sure that it doesn't get missed actually. So, thankfully, I have an open door, or Minister Environment and Minister of Ag and Forest have a very much an open-door policy. So, the conversations are being heard, it's just, my, my big concern right now, quite honestly, is how caribou range zones and pine beetle overlap. That's very concerning and the other main concern with pine beetle is the, the spread through Jasper National Park. Most, most people will say that the reason that BC was left as vulnerable as it was was because of the way the pine beetle was allowed to spread through Wells Gray. So, that's something that I know that our government is having serious discussions with the federal government on. They control the national parks obviously and for our province to be left vulnerable from a national park, it really isn't fair for our communities, right? So.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming to present to us, we really appreciate it and answering all our questions. Now, we do always offer that you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but our feelings are not hurt at all if you feel you need to go. You do have a family somewhere.
I'll stay for a few minutes, I do have a lot of office work to catch up on.
I imagine you do, yes.
But, so I will sneak out and if you guys finish early, my car's still there, I welcome in for, for pop after.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Really appreciate it, thank you. Alright, and our next presenter is from Stars Air Ambulances, it's nice to see you again, as you say, your annual report, we appreciate that. So, please come to the table, thank you.
Just one moment.
Alright.
I want to say thank you very much, it's a pleasure to.
Thank you. Take it back. I'll just say, yeah. I would too.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
That was very enlightening and it's great to see all of you and I am very pleased to bring you annual update. So, first and foremost, I do want to say thank you on behalf of all of our VIPs or our very important patients, that, you know, we are going to be crossing 35 years of being in Alberta and serving Albertans and we couldn't do it without leaders like yourselves and all Albertans across the province. That is the reason that Stars has continued to be able to maintain as a charitable entity, you know, be, be there for anyone who might possibly find themselves having the worst day of their entire life and at no cost to the patient. We cannot do that without people like you, so we thank you for that. So, we'll just start right off with the budget. This slide that I bring to you every year. So, for the past three years, on the expenditure side, not much has changed really. About three-quarters of the pie continues to be aviation and medical components. The smaller pieces are still base operations and dispatch and education and for education actually, we are going to be in your community on November 19th. Your hospital is booked for critical care training, simulation training with the mannequin to work with your physicians and nurses here, so be looking for that. And administration costs, we are still, the last three years, we are still at 15%. CRA allows up to 35%, so we feel we are doing our very best to keep that in check. On the funding side, now, for government funding with Alberta Health Services, we are still in a 10-year affiliation agreement which is due to expire next year. So, I assure you, we are at the very highest level of discussions right now on where we're hopeful that that might go. In the meantime, this particular year, so normally, Alberta Health Services has always been at 20% government funding for that block, $7 million per year, block funding. But this year, early on this year, they gave us a $2 million top-up for additional fuel costs and other costs that, that were associated. So, we're very grateful to them, we must always remember, Alberta Health Services is our single largest funding partner, you know, so it is very much a united effort as we work together. In the meantime then, on the fundraising side, so still, there's $20 million that needs to be found every single year and of that, the single largest funding source is the Stars Lottery. We are the only charitable lottery in Canada that did have a sellout for 23 years straight. The last two years, we did not and it really had hurt us quite a bit. This year, we had a sellout once again.
Oh, good.
So, we're very excited for that and, you know, so grateful for the support that we've received from Albertans because it makes, when we have a sellout, it made a difference of $1.5 million, quite significant when you can have a sellout. In calendar campaign, it seems to hold its own, just generating somewhere between $800,000 to $1 million per year, these are all in thousands. People still want to, you know, they want to support, they want to read those patients' stories, so calendar campaign's still holding its own. And then site registration program, which is our only revenue generating source, but that has been down the last two, three years, but rightfully so. Oil and gas are the largest users of that program and, you know, they've not, they've had their own challenges, right? They're not as busy in the field, they're not registering as many sites. So, it makes a difference of more than $1 million per year. So, it has been down a little bit, but, for the last three years, but we're very hopeful, knock on wood, we're up that, you know, oil and gases and the industry- knock on wood, we're up that, you know, oil and gases and the industries, um, agriculture is included in that as well as forestry, that all those partners are gonna get busy again and we're all gonna be able to help each other. So in the meantime, this is where we're at with our rural municipal initiative. So this, I wanted to bring this to you because this is a part of the program that you're a part of. We have currently seven municipalities that have reached logo recognition, where they have logos on the helicopters that serve Alberta. They've reached more than a million dollars. Brand new one this year in July, Rocky View County, uh, reached five hundred thousand dollars, so they got a logo recognition on the helicopter out of Calgary. And that's a big step forward when you see like all of the other real impactful leaders have all been in the northern regions because, you know, we, we are very much needed all across, but it's our northern region, and you're included in that, that we have vast remote region and not always a lot of, um, access to other resources. You know, sometimes in the far northern regions, like it's two or three hours for ground ambulance to get there. They don't have ambulance bays every thirty, forty-five minutes away as you do when you get into the larger urban centers. So it's very important that, you know, we continue to work with our, um, chain of survival partners, you know, we work very closely with, you know, fire department, um, ground ambulance, police services, there, we're all in this together. It takes a team to save a life. So I want to show you where we're at with our urban partners because that's growing as well. So the red stars, oh, I'm sorry, I wanna tell you, all the green areas are all the rural municipalities that are on board, um, part of the rural municipal initiative program in Alberta and including northeastern B C there for Peace River Regional District. So you can see, we're very much close to closing the loop on, at about ninety percent of all rural municipalities are making an annual contribution, like yourselves, through recognizing Stars as part of their emergency protective services for their residents. And it's currently generating collectively one point eight million dollars per year in sustainable funding for us to be able to serve, you know, have three bases within Alberta. So the red stars represent our urban partners that are on board now. So we've welcomed seven new partners this year. Um, Flagstaff County, now they did kind of a regional approach that they have a lot of smaller villages, hamlets, that type of thing. So they made an, um, per capita contribution on behalf of all of their urbans that fall within their boundaries. And then Wheatland County, they also came forward and said, we like that idea. So they went and had me come to, uh, present to a regional meeting where they had all their mayors and, and reeves there. And, um, I made a presentation to them and as of this year, uh, town of Strathmore came on board. And so now all of their villages and town within their boundaries are also part of the municipal initiative program. So it is very much a united effort and we all need to remember that, you know, like we all travel, we all commute, go into neighboring municipalities, they come through Edson and through Yellowhead County as well. It's very much a partnership. To take that one step further now, we must always remember, now you can go across western Canada and you will still have access to Stars. That is an important factor and at no cost to you if you are flown. You might be visiting family in Winnipeg and be, have to be flown by Stars, still at no cost to you. I recently had a, um, a southern counselor that said that she wanted to share a story that her and her family had went to, uh, southern B C for holiday and her little boy had an incident and had to be flown by Stars. And she said, we've always, you know, as a part of their, um, the rural municipality that she's a counselor in, we've always supported Stars, we've recognized that, we, we want to make sure we preserve that for our residents. But she said, I never dreamed that I would go on holiday in a different province and it would still have access to Stars. That's the bigger picture for all of us. So here's, this is just as of last week, Yellowhead County and the statistics from two thousand sixteen to today, uh, well, almost today. And so giving you an idea, um, you're in a facility transfer, like they have been fairly high and, and now back down, so, but we still have three months to go as well as far as, um, missions and for some reason, excuse me, winter always seems to be the worst time. Like we can usually double or triple missions just because of the winter months. So keeping that in mind, uh, currently, you're about half of what we would be within Yellowhead County from the last couple of, um, years. Another, uh, concern, or not concern, but it just, we wanna make sure that we stay on top of things. I don't know whether or not maybe you have new personnel, medical personnel at the hospital, maybe some new doctors. We find that with a lot of the smaller communities that every once in a while, after a couple of years, they get, you know, locums in, they get new doctors and they don't really know anything about Stars or how to access Stars, which is why we try to have regular rotation at least once a year that we would, um, have training with your staff so that we can, you know, bring, provide all of that information to them. Because it seems like when the stats go down, we find, when we get there to do the training, oh, they have a couple of new doctors, right? So, so, um, if that is the case, maybe, then, you know, we're gonna be here next, next month, so we're gonna have that opportunity to work with your medical personnel. So as I said, you know, we all travel, we all commute in the neighboring municipalities and they come through yours as well. So it's important to recognize what's happening in our neighborhood. Now, in the exact same timeframe, instead of a hundred and thirty-three missions in that timeframe, now we see eight hundred and eighty-three. Quite significant change as far as, you know, commuting and what might be happening in our immediate local area with your neighboring municipalities. All the more reason that it is very much a united effort. On the fleet recap, now I presented last year to you that we were gonna be tackling a fleet replacement. Our helicopters are all thirty-five years old. They, uh, last year, you know, we've had some great challenges because now we've discovered that the BK one-seventeens, that we have eight of them, that they are all, um, they've been phased out of production, they're no longer making parts. It's, it's been a real challenge this last little bit. And so, uh, we thought we were facing a hundred and seventeen million dollar capital campaign and then in Sep-, uh, in December of last year, Saskatchewan government announced that they would not only sign a ten-year affiliation agreement for fifty percent government funding, but they would also pay for one helicopter at thirteen million dollars, which led Alberta Health Services in March of this year, said that they would pay for one helicopter for Alberta. And in the meantime, you know, we are still in our current affiliation agreement for one more year. And then the federal government, previously, federal government never really recognized Stars, they always said that you're a provincial entity. Now that we have, we are covering western Canada, we have six bases in three provinces and we serve four provinces because we serve northeastern and southeastern B C as well. They recognized us and said, yes, we understand and know what you're doing for western Canada and they've given us a grant for sixty-five million dollars to pay for five of those helicopters to cover western Canada. So now we are just facing, still in capital campaign mode, so please remember, you know, we have to find twenty million dollars every year for operations, for fundraising, and then we are also going to be in a capital campaign for the remaining two helicopters. The reason I have that little bit of leeway between twenty-six and thirty million dollars is thirteen million dollars per helicopter, choose twenty-six, and then, um, it's about a million dollars, I know it sounds crazy, but it's about a million dollars per base for training. We have to pull all the pilots, they have to go for training, we have to backfill with other pilots and overtime from other bases in order to fill for a week or two weeks while those pilots are going to train. So it's, it's a combination of many things in order, so it's about a million dollars per base and we have two bases left that need to be trained, the Edmonton and the Calgary base. So, and then we don't know, we expect to have all the helicopters by twenty-twenty-two, but it has to be in, um, U S dollars and we don't know what that will be. And so that is why we've allowed, allowed a little bit more leeway there, saying that it could be up to thirty million dollars that we need to raise. So we took delivery of the first and second helicopter this May and the first one became operational out of Calgary in July of this year. The second one is busy training for other pilots for other bases. Just last week, the third helicopter arrived and is going to be operational in Saskatchewan. We've already placed the order for number four, five, and six, which we expect to be either at the end of next year or the very beginning of twenty-twenty-one. And then the remaining three, we are in the process of placing that order right now because you have to, you have to, um, place your orders way ahead of time. It comes in threes. It's not like you can go to a used car parking lot or a brand new dealership and just, you know, pick out what you want, right? They don't make them until you, you've ordered them and you're paying for them. So we expect the last three somewhere between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two on the hopes and pretense that we have completed the capital campaign as well. If not, we will probably continue the capital campaign and, and use some financing or whatever we have to, but we, because we, we do plan to sell all the BKs as well as the two A W one-three-nines, but we will not look at selling any of them until we have a full fleet. We, we don't wanna compromise in any way, shape, or form our operations. So once we have a full fleet, every, every base is operational with, then we will look at what the market is for the BK one-seventeens, whether it is a market, maybe they have to be parted out, like, we don't know at this point, you know, wherever it be, but we're making sure we still have them for backup right now. And then we will look at what the market will be for A W one-three-nine as well. So that could top off maybe the last little residual bit that we may need to complete the campaign. So that is the plan. Here's a sneak peek of the brand new medical interior. It's, uh, you know, lots, so many things upgraded, like this, it's no different than vehicles or anything else, like, um, medical equipment, you know, every few years, there's brand new technology that's the latest and greatest, so, you know, you have to keep updating that as well. So this is still very much an airborne intensive care unit. A couple of the new changes would be that bridge that goes across the patient there, that's a sliding bridge now that goes back and forth, that can snap into any kind of equipment, whether it's a defibrillator, whether it's the heart monitor, it may be the airborne inten-, um, ultrasound, like all the different pieces of equipment can go on that sliding bridge, so it's in close proximity to the patient or wherever we need it to be. On the left-hand side, there's a big compartment there, it's got clip-in, clip-out bags of all kinds of specialty items in each bag so that we can just grab and go take with the patient. If we need to go take the patient into the hospital, we can take whatever type of equipment in, in a certain bag that we need. That also completely comes out being that, you know, if we do get enough patient information about a call, a certain call, then we can, if we need to take two patients, then we can take, just clip in, you know, what bags we do absolutely need and take that compartment out and we have room for a second stretcher there as well. So it is, um, absolutely wonderful new aspect to the environment and, and the medical side of things. So I wanna thank you so much for your leadership and your support. We really appreciate not only your dedication to Edson residents, but your dedication to your municipal neighbors. That is a commitment to safety, that is a commitment to everyone having quality of life. So we appreciate and thank you so much for your continued support. At the two dollar per capita rate, you are a part of that municipal initiative that I showed you. And we appreciate your standing motion that we are included in your protective services budget each year, that we don't get lost or forgotten like we are apart. We appreciate that you recognize Stars as part of your emergency protective services for your residents. That is how we can continue to fight for life together. So in closing, I wanna say, whether it's partnerships, you know, with our chain of survival partners, fire department, we've worked so closely with them on every single call. You know, um, search and rescue, the ground ambulance, the fire services and the police services, like everyone, it is very much a united effort. It is partnerships. And partnerships also include yourselves, like municipalities, individuals that support. Partnerships do save lives and we thank you very much. And I have a little bit of a, one, couple things, if you allow me.
Certainly, certainly.
First and foremost, I want to officially welcome you to the municipal initiative program and we hope that this small little token of appreciation that you'll find somewhere that you can show your residents that you are doing something very special for them for their safety and their quality of life. We really want to say thank you for being a partner that saves lives.
Thank you.
So I'm hoping we can have a photo opportunity.
Well, I think we need to just take a pause and have a photo opportunity. I do. So let's do that, please. And Al, I think you need to be in that, you've been working well on our side too, so please do. Tell me, where would you like us?
Over by the nurse, right here. Dan, Jenny.
Steve?
I don't know where.
Maybe.
Move the chairs over here.
We could use that as a background.
There we go.
So I'll bring this to you, town of Edson, our partner in saving lives. Thank you for your steadfast commitment to the Stars municipal initiative.
There, come on up, Al, we have to see you in the group picture, come on.
Excuse me.
There, good. Thank you.
Oh, come on up in here, Deputy Mayor, you have to receive this.
I put my top back on again.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh, you would wish I had it on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so kind of a little circuit. Now, if you want, your officer's gonna be here. I think we'll wait for him first.
It shows all, it is an actual photo on scene call and it shows all the partnerships and how we work together. In closing, if you, if you have a few minutes, if I'm not overtime, I just had a little four-minute video I was gonna play for you.
Why not?
Is that all right?
Certainly, yes.
Is that one of our priorities or?
Could be.
Yeah. I'm here.
Somebody paid it forward to me for that helicopter to be in the air.
I just wanna say thanks to everybody that supports Stars.
The people who help out in any way are saving lives every day.
The donors, the volunteers.
For, for that helicopter to be in the air.
I just wanna say thanks to everybody that supports Stars.
The people who help out in any way are saving lives every day.
The donors, the volunteers, the V I Ps who go out and do stuff.
The people who buy lottery tickets, Stars calendars, bequests and a will, they're amazing.
I'm grateful for them every day. I do truly think about them every day.
I call them angels.
All those people that do that, honest, there are no words.
It's unbelievable what, what they do, especially if they haven't been personally touched by it.
I can guarantee that, you know, everybody in the province is either already knows somebody or they are gonna know somebody that needs a service.
You don't know what could be around the corner?
I never expected to need Stars, right? Who does?
You just never know.
You never know.
You never know.
You just never know.
We never thought it would be my dad.
I didn't ever think it would happen to me.
Here we've used them three times.
We're three strong with the Stars use.
We're in a small area here and there's been three people within three miles that have flown on Stars.
This is real, it affects real people in real situations.
If they weren't around, I wouldn't be here today. I think the outcome three years ago would have been totally different.
If we didn't have it, I'd be dead.
We didn't have support like this, you know, people die.
I'm here today because Stars was able to fly there and pick me up and fly me to a hospital.
With and supporting them, I wouldn't be here. My family wouldn't have a father.
When people donate, there's, every penny that they give is saving someone's husband, someone's dad, someone's kids, someone's spouse, like, it's a pretty big deal.
Could be saving your own life one day by supporting Stars.
I did a fundraiser for the Stars, I think I made four hundred dollars.
Instead of buying Christmas gifts, we all just pooled Stars.
We did a Mother's Day fundraiser.
And the other one we did, beer and haircut for the man.
Fellow Kinsmen started a ladies' night.
Diamonds in the Sky gives money back to STARS.
We had one birdhouse left over. The auctioneer said, "Let's sell that for STARS, $2,000 bucks."
Whether it's $5 to $500,000 and everywhere in between, every dollar counts.
Thank goodness for the donors.
It really means a lot.
You guys are incredible.
It makes me cry a little bit to know that.
Because it's living proof of where that money's going.
I think you want to say a big thank you, right?
It's a little bit shy.
Every one of those dollars that people put in really makes a difference.
It makes a huge difference.
And goes a long, long way.
I believe it gave our daughter a chance that she wouldn't have had otherwise.
So, I really would support anyone who wants to donate.
You can have all the employees doing what they're doing, but if you don't have the support, you don't have the donors.
They're all intertwined, like, one can't happen without the other.
It would not be possible and wouldn't be reaching as far.
What does a person say to that?
Oh, thank you.
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 Thank you so much.
From the bottom of our hearts.
A hearty thank you.
Like a huge thank you.
A huge, huge thank you.
Thank you. You guys are lifesavers. Keep doing the work you're doing.
You don't think you're going to need it? But when you do, you're sure thankful?
I think that truly reflects what we all feel too, and thank you very much.
So, we want to say that you by our side. We thank you so much.
Any councillors have any questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Yes, councillor Bev.
Yeah, thank you very much. And like we had talked just a little earlier, I know from personal experience, our family has used it and it's sure made a difference in our lives and stuff like that. And what I like is even though if the municipalities or the counties don't get on board and give you any money, you still fly out to their sites or whatever and you're there all the time. And I know in previous council, when you first come and give us a presentation of what you needed, it was unanimous that all of us said, "Yes, we're going to support you." We've seen the benefit of it from that. We see STARS flying around here all the time, sometimes too often, which isn't a good thing. But I mean, you know, you guys do an excellent job. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Councillor Shannard.
STARS has been around 35 years, but I recognize your face, so I'd like to say thank you. You've been part of STARS for how many years?
Thirteen next month.
Okay.
But, you know, thank you for STARS, all of you did.
Thank you.
Councillor Byer.
Through the chair, thank you for the presentation. I did the math, hopefully is correct. It looks like STARS comes out to our region every, once every 10 days, so that's pretty frequent. I was wondering, though, for the areas that currently aren't contributing to STARS, do you still do presentations to their councils?
Yes, for the councils that I'm allowed to go to. So, yes, I continually request, you know, to make a presentation, bring them information because it's important, you know. We are, we are, municipalities represent Alberta and Albertans. And I think that it's important that all municipalities, whether they're supporting or not, that they have the same information. You know, if they choose not to support, then, you know, that's their choice. At the same time, I think that eventually, you know, it will come to reason that if we all did a little something, like, in my way of thinking, just my personal opinion, $2 per person, per year, that it's just like a united life insurance policy that anyone can use it. You know, we pay, we pay more for a cup of coffee.
Don't we? Right.
So, $2 per year, that we continue to have STARS available to whoever needs it, even if it ends up being one of ourselves someday, you know, it's really not a big ask.
Not at all. Okay, I really, really appreciate your annual report. To me, it just keeps us right updated as to where things are happening and glad that you got the new helicopters. Very glad to see that you've had contributions from other provinces, the federal government.
Yes.
We do have to all work together. That's a costly undertaking to have to replace them all.
I would say we're planning for the next 35 to 40 years, you know, for our future generations. So, when we make presentations, we ask, you know, I've even had, I have some asked to some major leadership municipalities that are saying, yes, they're going to consider because they do see it as a generational investment.
Truly. Now, you're welcome. Did you have a question?
I just have one more, please. Do you have a lot of people applying to be medevac people on your choppers and that? How do you pick them?
Well, we, it is a bit like, we require some pretty high-level commitments. So, for pilots, most of our pilots are ex-military because they already have night vision, goggles, experience. They have the high-level amount of hours that's required. And they're usually looking for more of a family-type of schedule now. And so, and we can offer that. We don't pay where, you know, they could go to commercial companies and make a lot more money than working for STARS. But we can offer them a regular schedule. They can have a family life. And there's that fulfillment piece that you just can't replace. And that's the same on the air medical crew side. For paramedics, paramedics and nurses, they both, like, a paramedic needs to be an advanced life support. A paramedic needs to have five years' experience. Nurses, they have to have, like, emergency critical care, like ICU experience and emergent experience. And then in addition, once they are hired, they go, we put them through STARS Academy, which is an even higher level of critical care training. And then they buddy up with someone for several months before they're actually allowed to fly. Like, it is the very highest level of critical care training. So, when we, when the STARS helicopter is coming, it's not just about the transport. It's about the crew members and that high-level expertise and that intensive care unit environment that we're bringing the hospital right to that patient. Critical care starts as soon as we reach the patient.
Now, you did say it costs a million dollars or something in training for the helicopters, I'm sure, and the staff.
That's for the pilots.
Oh, not even the staff training? That's on top of that?
No, no.
Oh, wow, okay.
That was what we were talking about.
So, it is costly, but then you do have the best person out.
And then that's, you know, where we, we take that one step further in trying to work very closely with the communities that we serve by bringing that critical care training piece right to your hospital and working with your physicians and their staff as well, at no cost to your community. We have donors that believe in that education piece and they provide the funding for that each year.
Oh, I see.
So that we can bring that to your communities and work very closely with your medical personnel.
Very nice. Well, thank you again, and I'll give you the same offer I gave Martin. You can stay, listen to all the bylaws, or you can feel free to leave, whichever you choose.
Okay, thank you very much. It's wonderful to see all of you again. Thanks for your partnership.
See you next year.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we can pause again. We're good at pausing. Same spot?
We should. We should do it for, yes, and get out.
Um, we got way more chairs to move.
He'll sit in the audience where he wants.
Well, they'll look at the picture card. Yeah, we got to get back to the exact same position.
Okay.
We need a photo. Over.
We need a photo area, you know.
You want the picture with the lady in the picture, right? Or do you want that?
No, it was a dog. It was a dog in the house.
Oh, he wants his own private picture. Okay. We can do that.
Okay, Mike? Number three. Okay, well, convene again. And we are doing reading of the bylaws. I'd like a motion that council give second reading to the public notification bylaw number 2233. All right, councillor Shannard. All right, administration, do you have anything else to add? I believe you did speak to it before.
I don't believe so. This bylaw's been before council at committee level and had the first reading. We did add the social media app that was suggested by council at the first reading. And we've had the public hearing, so we have no concerns with this going forward.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? Okay, passed. I would like a motion for council to give third reading to bylaw 2233, councillor Sorensen. All in favor? Passed. All right, reports from administration. Our first one is the 2019 tax sale date. I'd like a motion that council set the public auction date for the recovery of unpaid property taxes as November 26, 2019. Councillor Currie? All right, is there any discussion on this from administration? I think it's.
I can answer any questions. I think it's in the memo quite clearly. It's a yearly process we go through. This is just to set the date so we can get the advertising in, on in time to meet that date.
Yes, councillor Shannard.
Just one quick question. Do you think we'll have any property for auction?
We do have some. There will be another memo that comes back before that time to, council must reset, set reserve bids. So, there'll be a bit more information at that time about how many we have. We're always continuing to try and collect those in beforehand. So, we'll let you know more as we get closer, keeping suspense a little bit.
Thank you for that. All right, all in favor of this motion? Passed. All right, road closure for construction. I'd like a motion that council authorize the temporary closure of portions of Sixth Avenue and 48th Street to accommodate utility upgrades during the month of October until complete. Thank you. You're going to make the motion, councillor Byer, thank you. And we have Mitch Hamm going to speak to it.
So, to council through the chair, we're going to close a small section of Sixth Ave and 48th Street to accommodate the construction for the upgrade of utility lines for the lodge and for the northern part of town. It'll, it'll be about two weeks to close with a contingency of a full month to account for any weather or construction issues. We've notified the residents in the area that will be affected and, yeah.
All right, glad you put in that contingency about weather. It is Edson, and I live right in that area, so it's quite interesting. But, any other questions then? Yes?
Through the chair to you, Mr. Hamm. Thank you for contacting residents nearby to inform them of that. Would it be worthwhile to consider some of our partners, like the school division that have buses that run? I don't know if there's buses that run on Sixth Ave, but I try to avoid that time of the day. But if there are, maybe it would be considered, considerable to notify them?
Absolutely. Sorry, we did contact the school division and the fire department to notify them. Priority one is Sixth Avenue, so we took that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Shannard?
My only question, was there a holdup? Why are we starting this construction so late in the year? Not against closure, but I'm going, it's October. When you hit the ticket, you get cold real quick.
Absolutely. Through the chair to councillor Shannard. The fact that we are working so closely with the Kinsman Water Park, we wanted to take that into account for closure. So, we wanted to wait till the middle of September. And we were just waiting on some approvals and things like that to line up with our construction. So, it is, I agreed late in the year, but we haven't had the best construction year either in terms of.
So, I guess, and the question, main reason was, we wanted to keep the spray park open.
Correct.
Then, thank you. That's a good answer. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Currie.
Through the chair, just a question about, I've seen the advertisement on Sixth Ave. Are we doing any advertisement off of Sixth Ave to just try to encourage people not to go that direction?
Through the chair to councillor Currie, we have signage set up to the south on 48th Street and to the east on Sixth Avenue, taking into account people's back and forth in the areas. Also, we've posted online and through advertisements, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, if that's all the questions, those in favor, opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number three, allocation from building maintenance reserves. So, I'd like a motion that council allocate $10,000 from the building maintenance reserve for the repair of the overhead door within the wash bay of the public workshop. Mr. Vahagi, you're speaking to that? After I get a motion. Sorry, councillor Byer.
Now, chairman, through to councillor Shannard, I don't have anything to add beyond the review of the report. However, I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions then? Yes, councillor Shannard.
I see we're using a company out of Edmonton. Do we consider the local company that does this and we ask for prices?
Now, chairman, through to councillor Shannard, this is a quote example that we have. We will be going back out again, as that was from July. However, we do use relatively, we do look for quotations to ensure that our estimates are based in real information. So, with that amount, we do have a requirement under our purchasing policy to go to local and non-local suppliers who may be able to provide the service.
So, this was just a quote from this company, just randomly picked a company and for budgeting purpose, what were doors cost?
Now, chairman, through to councillor Shannard, yes, we actually had an inspection done due to some failures in the summer. We had been postponing this, hoping to make it into the new year. However, we had another failure which prompted the request.
Okay. Yes, councillor Sorensen.
Through the chair to administration, just clarify, I'm not quite understanding. It says you have $6,000 allocated for facility repairs and you need 10, so shouldn't you just be asking for four more?
Now, chairman, through to councillor Sorensen, 10 was the quote we had on replacement of all the doors. This particular door, we believe we should be able to repair based on what was required. However, if we budget for exactly $6,000 and it comes in at $6,300, we would be coming back to you for additional set of funds. What we will note is that we were planning to replace in our upcoming budgets, which of course still need to be approved. We were planning to replace doors every year in the coming years. So, we would simply be looking to replace these funds from our operating of 2020, should those funds be approved. In other words, we only spend what we need to spend, but if we don't ask for a sufficient amount, we have to come back to get another budget adjustment.
Any other questions?
So, just to kind of follow up. So, you have $6,000 allocated for this year and you're not going, you're planning on not using that at all because you're going to get another $10,000?
Yeah. Now, chairman, through to councillor Sorensen, currently our budget says there's $6,000 for facility maintenance. We in fact have spent several tens, thousands of dollars on the facility. So, we had not budgeted in accordance with our needs for this year and we're looking to adjust that in the future.
That answers everyone's questions. All right, all in favor? Opposed, none, so carried. All right, the Fortis Alberta franchise fee. I would like a motion that council reduce the franchise fee percentage to 4.75% for the 2020 calendar year with Fortis Alberta. Councillor Shannard, you're going to speak to that?
I can speak to that, yes. Edson, the franchise fee is the rental fee the town charges for Fortis to operate in our municipality. The reason we are actually asking for this reduction is we, when we look back to where a little while ago, we bought the ATCO franchise fee and we adjusted that percentage to reflect income that we had been already receiving to keep it relatively the same. This is just doing that same thing with the Fortis one. At the moment, we're at 5%. Doing that would bring us around 378, I think. But that is more than what we have historically been getting. So, if we keep it around that 350 or 360 amount, that takes that fee down to 475. So, that's why we are suggesting that that gets reduced. We're treating them both the same.
Yes, councillor Sorensen.
Through the chair to administration, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the asset management plan doesn't that forecast a need for a growth in utility rates of 2% to 4% for the next 20 years? So, we can't, we can't keep utilities at flat rate?
That is correct. I think with this, we were, we will be looking at addressing those through our water and sewer utility rates within our utility system. This one, I think, was just so that we're treating ATCO and Fortis the same with just making sure we have that same percentage amount to continue receiving the same amount of revenue from those franchise fees. So, yes, the asset manager plan did state that, that was more through our utility system rather than through the franchise fees.
Can I just have a follow-up?
Me? Yes.
So, I am going to be voting in favor of this motion, but I don't believe we can continue with this strategy of maintaining these two franchise fees at a flat rate indefinitely. So, I know we have done that for the past year and a half or so. But I'd encourage all of council and administration that we. But I'd encourage all of council and administration that we need to, we can't continue with that strategy much longer.
All right, councillor Sennard?
I'm actually pleased that we're reducing something. So with this reduction, therefore, it would pass on to the consumers. So with the Atco up in this, so the taxpayers, where they pay more, they'll save, they'll distract?
That is, that is correct. Yes, on the bills they get from their energy suppliers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
To be clear through the chair to administration, that if we keep, if we reduce the rate, the franchise rate, the taxpayers actually pay the exact same?
Not just, if we're looking at it from the amount of the billing, that saving is reflected in the bills that the taxpayers get from their energy supplier. Our budget will remain the same, because we've adjusted that percentage to get the same amount of money within our budget as well, so.
So the taxpayer's utility bill is actually gonna be the same, should be same?
There would be a slight reduction. For the Fortis one, I have it in the memo here. So if the, if the franchise fee was kept at the 5%, they would pay over 12 months, $38.81. Reducing it to the 4.75, it reduces that to 36.86. So there was a slight savings within their billing that they get from their energy supplier, not from our utility bill, but those other utility bills.
I'm sorry, but if our total revenue stays the same, and we have the same number of taxpayers, that means the taxpayers are saying the same amount from year to year?
I'm not quite sure. I'll try and answer through the chair, I'll try and answer. These bills don't come from us, though, so we're keeping our revenue exactly the same. So therefore, how it affects our taxes is the same. We're keeping those revenues the same for us. The amount that they will pay Fortis will drop a little bit on the bills that the taxpayers receive from, it might be Epcor or whoever their energy supplier is. They'll be paying slightly less on those bills, and then we will receive the same franchise fee from Fortis. It's not answering.
I don't believe that's true, but we can continue.
Okay, or have a discussion afterwards, that would be great. All right, all in favor of the motion? All right, we'll go on to information items. There are none. I think we're at council committee reports. We'll start with you, councillor Bevan.
I have nothing to report.
All right, councillor Currie?
Just AUMA last week from the 25th to the 27th. Yeah, and it was fantastic. I think I would have said a lot of not questions answered, because the budget has not been released, so a lot of non-information. But I did attend a session about rebuilding your downtown core, that I thought had some really fantastic ideas and just a lot of things that we should discuss, and ideas to really make it happen. And I thought one of the really interesting things they said is, one of the experts there said that the retail apocalypse is not actually real, if you look at the trends. And it's just about making sure you have the right variety to ensure that it continues. So I thought that was really interesting, with all that you hear about the retail apocalypse, as she called it.
Councillor Sennard?
Okay, I also, AUMA is only a report. I also attended the revitalization. Opportunity to meet the new government, lobbying, introducing yourself to the new one. That was, I spent most of my time. The one thing that was interesting is, AUMA this year recognized outgoing youth counselor. They're looking to get youth involved, and they actually signed one of Edson's youth counselors to be one of the first delegates invited to AUMA, so that was interesting. And most of it was lobbying, getting to know the new government, and also waiting for the budget to come forward. My questions could not be answered.
Councillor Sorensen?
Yeah, the only thing I have to report other than AUMA is, youth council leaders or the councillors met on September 23rd to go over the applications. And we had seven returning and five new, and it's been, it's been presented on the newspaper and in social media, so we're excited to have a brand-new year starting. And I would note, just heading tomorrow to Jasper for the annual recycling council of Alberta conference, so I'm looking forward to that and hearing the new government's strategy on recycling.
And really, congratulations to the committee with the youth council. It seemed very successful first year. So that was good. Councillor Byer?
I've got a few things to report. On September 19th, I had an Edson library board meeting. We passed our drug and alcohol and cannabis policy. When we decided to add a cannabis policy to our drug and alcohol policy, we realized that we were deficient on that. So we had to start from scratch. And then we also passed a revision of a previous FOIP policy, which mistakenly had our CAO, Derek Cott, as our FOIP person. So we've talked to administration about that, and now have taken him off and added our head librarian on. The board approved, so to update you on eresources, the library offers more than just books. And we've got a lot of different eresources that we have, and one of them is called Overdrive. And it's a place where people can go to borrow ebooks or audiobooks for free. You just have to have a library card, which is also free. And so right now, we're in a pool, so if you wanna get like the top book, whatever it is you're looking for, you might have to wait until it's your turn. And the board has approved to allow our librarian to kinda put some additional money towards that. So now Edson will have access exclusively to the books that we buy. That way, we don't have to wait in line, and then we can access the free books faster. So I thought that was a really good thing to just kinda let you guys know. And we're looking for four new library members coming up here shortly, two from the county, two from the town. We're working on our plan of service. As you guys know, you're invited to the luncheon on Monday, October 7th, as well as many other community members. And then, October, sorry, and then September 23rd, I also had the youth council meeting, where we went over and talked and decided which councillors we were going to have on. So I think that's all been made public now. You can see their names there. And then on September 30th, yesterday, I attended a Yellhead Regional Library Board meeting in Spruce Grove. And it was really interesting, so they, since the new directors come on, Carla, who presented here a couple weeks or two ago, they've done an organizational review of their whole organization. And their recommendations are extensive with changes, and I think in every single job role. People moving around, reporting to different people, job descriptions are changing, and just kinda making it so that organization can be more efficient and better prepared for the future. And they expect that to take about 12 to 18 months, so I thought it was really interesting how they, you know, that's a big task to take on, so. And cybersecurity is huge. A lot of the other regional libraries in Alberta have been hit with malware that has cost them financially. They've had to pay ransoms of undisclosed amounts to get their information back. But luckily, we have not, and it's one of the top priorities of one of their directors, is to manage our cybersecurity and make sure that we are, I guess, on top of it. So, and that we, our situation doesn't change, so that's all I have.
You just, on your cannabis, you just added, so no cannabis in the library, is that what you're saying, as well as smoking or alcohol?
Okay, so the policy is directed for staff, for staff.
Oh, for staff, all right.
Yeah, we have, we have to work on a different policy for that, which would represent a regular public policy on cannabis in buildings. But we didn't have a drug or alcohol policy for staff members.
So what is your policy now?
So it is, don't quote me verbatim, but any recreational use is not allowed while you're on shift, or to show up intoxicated with cannabis or any other drug that would inhibit your ability to do your job. But if you had a prescription, just as any other prescription, that would make you unable to do your job, then you would have to self-disclose that.
Okay, thank you. All right, on the 18th, I had a walk-through Parkland Lodge. It really is coming along very nicely. Went to AUMA the 25th, 26th, 27th. And my highlight really was our meeting with Rick McIver. And he did listen to our mayor discussing the $2 million that we're still looking for. And I enjoyed listening to the speakers and the different motions. This Atco soap we got, I wondered why we got soap, but I read about it. And it just says, "You're washing your hands with soap that is made with recycled carbon captured from a process that reduces carbon dioxide emissions and increases energy efficiency." So, I hope it's true. It's just sort of interesting. I did enjoy meeting Casey Mandu, our Minister of Municipal Affairs. And just by chance, I also met with and visited with Josephine Pahn, the Minister and Senior of Housing, which I appreciated, because I will have to deal with that through Parkland Lodge. And Joe Cece, who is the critic of municipal affairs, would like to come to Edson when he does his tour. So I'm hoping that we can get him out here, too. So it was very, very enjoyable, and that's the end of my report. Do we have any questions then, from the media or public regarding items on this council's meeting?
I have no questions.
No questions, all right. Before we adjourn, I would really like to thank Ms. Bittner for an outstanding job as CAO. Thank you very much. It's just refreshing that you could just step into that role and answer all our questions, so I certainly appreciate that. Thank you. All right, would anyone, all right, councillor Sennard, you're making a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.